All right, you're live. And this is Council Dabit.
Good evening, everyone. This is Tuesday, September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the scheduled City Council workshop regarding the American Rescue Plan Act funds. Around the table, we have Councilor Yakabaga, Councilor Tremble, Councilor Leonard, Councilor Schaefer, Councilor Sprague, myself, Councilor Fornier. On Zoom, we have Councilor Pelletier and Councilor Dabit. And we are joined at the table by City Manager Deb Rory. First up on the agenda is an update on the funding status.
Yep, I just like to continue to update this. The only, this reflects all of the awards made to date. You're going to notice that there are some statements that are in italics and things like that. So we're still working with Wellspring. It does appear that they're going to get some amount of money from the state of Maine. I've continued to be in contact with Suzanne Farley. So hopefully, we'll have a final discussion on that item here shortly. The food and medicine, the request was I'll work with food and medicine to get their direct cost budget related to their workforce navigator program. And then, under the disproportionately impacted communities, you're going to see in the first column something now called alternate diversion. The council had agreed to support the diversion efforts of the Bangor homeless shelter. But we also look to see if CDBG funding would be a potential alternate source of funding. And that has been confirmed to be an alternate source of funding. So that dollar amount is taken out so that we have a true understanding of where we sit at the moment. So where we sit at the moment is this council has committed fourteen point nine million dollars of the ARPA monies that were allocated to the city. You are still finalizing decisions on applications totaling five point nine million dollars. And right now, that leaves a little bit of a surplus. And as we finalize amounts, we'll be able, hopefully, as you wind this process up, to be looking at what, if any, additional funding is available so that we can come back and have conversations about some other priorities and other comments or potential opportunities that have come up since then. So. That's mine. Or I think Councilor Tremble.
Did we remove the broadband from the table?
No, it's on there.
Nope, we have two point six. Yeah, it's still in the.
Possibly, we might not allocate that money.
So interestingly enough, our new Business and Economic Development Officer that you met last night came down as something connectivity authority. So Stephanie is actually working through the specifics and will be back to you sometime here in the next couple of weeks to try to finalize that particular discussion.
Any questions, comments? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the screen.
Not so much on what is here, but at the Business and Economic Development Committee last night, we also discussed where objects have been funded using the block grant program. And we might want to consolidate and bring that into this discussion in the future.
Yep.
But we got about a million and a half dollars now that has been allocated, a fair amount of it, to projects that were once suggested as ARPA fundable projects. So we've done a lot with that additional funding, which is not as apparent here because we didn't use the ARPA funds. But when we're trying to express to the community what we're what we're doing and how those funds are being used, we should kind of mention that at the same time.
Yep. We do actually have a separate listing of those. So it'll be easy enough. We did it just to track the items that the council wanted to discuss and sort of the next steps and finally, and it will be easy enough for us to convert that into a into a public document that we can include in the next update.
Great. Councilor Dabit.
Thank you. One, I want to make sure it's clear that I am not driving right now. And also, just when we talk about the how we'll spend future funding, once we've allocated everything, just to make sure that we continue to talk about looking at funding employees' work during the days of the pandemic, just want to make sure that that's still on the table. So thank you. And I'm probably going to turn my screen off just so it's not distracting, but I'll be here and I'll turn it on for votes. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the update from prayer meetings, childcare and Bangor home, Bangor children.
Okay, so I'm going to suggest that we, I mean, well, I'm going to go ahead. So the individual will be coming if there are questions. So the Bangor Children's Home, just to remind folks, the total request was for just over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Three hundred and fifty thousand of that was for interior and facade renovations. And a hundred thousand dollars, it was to establish a fund for professional development for their workforce. We had some additional questions that we had asked. The application does not create additional slots. However, as time goes on, if they can do the renders with qualified staff, they hope to open more rooms. That was not the purpose of the application, and there's no guarantee on when we'll find qualified staff. With the lack of capital support, ARPA, or potential CDBG impact currently available childcare slots without funding, they do hope there won't be a loss. However, there are some rooms that without floors, flooring updates and some of the windows, they may have to close eventually. But it wouldn't be immediate. The hope is they'd be able to find a way to prevent them from happening. So one of our initial thoughts when we heard the request initially was, this is a historic structure. Is there a facade money that's available for this purpose? So while the CDBG program does offer a facade program, there is a significant amount of interest in that program right now. We have a number of applications or letters of interest from individuals. So it's likely we're going to be offering a target opportunity later this fall. So our CDBG funding, seventy percent of our allocation has to be to benefit low to moderate income properties or individuals or service providers, if you will. And those that do not are limited to thirty percent of our application. So if you think about our allocation and it does include, I believe it includes our program income, you're talking about three hundred thousand dollars of non-moderate to low income. So the concern is, is if we advance and fully fund all of those facade renovations with CDBG, we would use up all of our opportunity to make any potential strategic investments in other low to moderate income projects in the future. We will certainly, when we open the application process, we would certainly encourage them to apply. I can't say how it would be allocated at this point. So I just wanted to provide a little bit more detail because it had been a while since we'd seen the breakdown. The emphasis appeared, at least at the initial meeting, to be, is there a way to help with some of the capital costs through CDBG? There didn't seem to be support for the funding of a professional fund for workforce development. The capital is eighteen thousand for flooring, fifteen thousand for a roof repair, a hundred and fifty-five thousand for dormer renovation, a hundred and ten thousand dollars for window renovation, twelve thousand for electricals, twenty-three hundred for, twenty-three hundred, excuse me, twenty-three thousand for sprinkler head replacement, and eighteen thousand for the retaining wall. So they did reference in their application that they do have an endowment related to the facility. And right now, they are continuing to draw the endowment funds, actually to support their operations due to the higher cost of maintaining the building. And they are actively working to reduce the monthly draw of their endowment.
Councilor Tremble.
Yeah, I thought the way we left this last time was that we were, we just needed the breakdown. I thought we endorsed doing the facade. And we just wanted a breakdown plus to see if there was CDBG, if it couldn't. I thought we approved it conditionally. So did we take a vote on this before? I thought we did.
I thought we passed on it, and it would come back.
I thought we asked to see if it was CDBG eligible first before making a determination.
Okay, I thought we did. Okay.
But I know where you're headed.
I would, I mean, I think I'm more within. I would want to support this. It's a historic building in Bangor. It's a beautiful building in Bangor, and it's a child, been a childcare provider for decades. I would absolutely want to support this. If CDBG is not the pathway to do that, then let's look at doing the ARPA funds for the
For the capital.
For the capital. And I'm also assuming that it would be done with historic, it's not going to be blue vinyl sided.
It has to. It is on the national historic register.
Well, I would move that.
Okay.
Prove the facade improvements. Interior next year.
Capital improvement.
The whole three fifty. Yep. It's three fifty for the capital.
All right, a hundred, yeah, three fifty seven forty.
Second.
You have a motion. We have a second. Questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Yakabaga.
Yes.
Councilor Tremble.
Yes.
Councilor Leonard.
Yes.
Councilor Schaefer.
Yes.
Councilor Sprague.
Yes.
Councilor Pelletier.
Yes.
Councilor Dabit.
Yes.
I'll make it unanimous. That's great. Thank you.
All right.
All right. Next up, workforce development, United Way.
Correct. The funding request was eight hundred thousand dollars to support the community. It's a nonprofit hub to fill important gaps in the nonprofit sector. I'm going to stop again and make sure that everybody is aware. I do sit on the board. Forget that. Don't get to make a decision, but I just sit on the board. Gaps in the nonprofit sector. It's a key strategy to advancing collabora- collaboration of social service providers and other nonprofits in Bangor. It's really to create a physical hub that will provide in-person and virtual support, including coaching, professional partners, mentoring, and networking. It's meant to support the increased capacity and infrastructure of multiple organizations to work together while building capacity of the individual organizations. It's designed to advance collaboration and efficiency of social service providers and other nonprofits in the region to create data-driven measurable results for their organization and support individuals and families within Bangor and the larger region. The additional information is the congressionally directed spending request has not advanced. They will seek additional funding in two thousand and twenty-five. Are the other funds being sought or committed to date restricted for a particular purpose, operating or capital? No. And then, the budgets included both operating and capital, so we asked them to break that out. We have the revised budgets below, capital expenses of one point eight, two years of startup operating at about nine hundred thousand. And to date, they have raised approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars of private funding. I think the other question is, they're continuing to look for locations. They have been in our community for eighty-five years and are not looking to break that tradition and would prefer to be in Bangor and will work to do that. They did not deem connecting formal feasibility study necessary for several reasons. It's really a continuation of their Opportunity Two Thousand and Twenty-eight framework. And that had extensive community and professional input. It will also serve as a lasting legacy and sustainable path forward for the Opportunity Two Thousand and Twenty-eight work. United Way, Heart of Maine, United Way, has a strong track record of successfully implementing projects in the past. It demonstrates their capacity to carry out proposed initiatives effectively. They've thoroughly researched and analyzed the current needs and challenges in our community. And the proposed project aligns closely with those needs, making it a logical and strategic next step. Their research, fact-finding, and need assessments were not conducted in a vacuum. They consult and stakeholder, including representatives from nonprofits, governments, and businesses, as well as diverse set of community members. And then, they did provide operating projections going forward to demonstrate the sustainability of the site and the folks going forward. So.
Councilor Schaefer.
In the, in the little table budget, it shows city and county ARPA. They said contributing equally. Did the county contribute to this?
So the county, they did not, they were encouraged by a county commissioner, perhaps submitted an application. After the county's application process, I have shared the city's application. There was no way online for them to do that when they went back. So I just have simply forwarded the application that was provided to us to the county, and I think the county would consider it the funding on the city. I'm not, I can't sit here and say that they would fund it or not, but their intent is to look at the application based on the cities.
And they still have funding available to do that?
That's my understanding. Yeah.
Other comments, questions?
Can I add on to that? I mean, if I would see this as one of those, you know, when we first started this and we had those symbiotic funding opportunities, I would want to hear from the county and say, look, we're in if you're in. Because I think would make it a much more feasible project. And I would, I think I would support it more fully if it, if there was buy-in from the county as well. Because I think that these are services that are not going, appreciate that they want to stay in Bangor, but I think that these are services that are going to benefit the county and beyond.
That's correct. And I think the county would be amenable to that, and I think they were just waiting for some direction from the city. So if the council wanted to say something like that and say, you know, we're committing to partnering with the county.
So are we just like playing like carpet chicken?
Well, somebody has to go first. And the application came to us.
Councilor Tremble.
Yeah, I'm, I mean, we discussed this two or two, and I'm still, you know, it's a good, you know, the, you know, where does big work? I'm just still skeptical of this for ARPA funding, that's all. And at that level, so even if the county want to participate, I'm not, I wouldn't support eight hundred thousand in it. And I don't know if a lesser amount is, is going to help them a lot. So I'm, I'm way off on the eight hundred thousand, but and still skeptical at that point of, of using ARPA funding for it. We don't have any other funding to use, but I just have a high time using ARPA funding for this.
Councilor Yakabaga.
For me, I think regardless if the county goes with this or not, I, I would support partial funding for this project. There are so many nonprofit organizations that benefit from the work of United Way, part of Maine United Way. And we have not funded some of those organizations, and I feel they all like work under the umbrella of, of this. So I would definitely go with partial funding.
Councilor Pelletier.
Thank you. One of the things that we talked about during this entire process is the desire to fund programs that would help to have a ripple effect on the community, not just one thing, but lots of things. And to me, this is a project that would have ripple effects beyond what any of us could imagine by supporting not-for-profits that are doing amazing work in this area. I think, you know, even just one of the pieces of the project, which is to be able to provide warehousing and storage space for some not-for-profits, which prevents them from having to go out and rent a space and pay to maintain it and all of those things, that seems like a little thing, but to a not-for-profit that is struggling to make the most of the space that they have, that's a big deal. And I think, you know, providing folks with support on how to write a great grant application so that they can get money for projects that will help people in the greater Bangor area is, is worth its weight in gold. So I'm in support of fully funding this project. I would like to see our support contingent on the county also pitching in, and I would really like to see it depend on the hub staying in Bangor.
Councilor Leonard.
So the county is already interested in collaborating, collaborating with the council on at least one other project. Do we want to sort of use this as a leapfrog to start those conversations, not only for Heart of Maine United Way, but also with those potential other projects that they have in mind? They already want to come forward to council with?
I think we have been having those conversations with the county, seeing how we can team up. I think this one is just kind of sticking out more so than a bunch of the others. But I, I believe we have reached out to the county for some of the other ones. And we have not heard back.
So we'll, we'll, we'll talk offline. I've been talking with the commissioners recently. We have some, anyway, we'll, we'll talk offline.
My two cents, I'd love to see what we could do partnering with the county. This is a proven organization, and quite frankly, I thought this is one of the more creative applications that we got created on their side. Only because, as Council Pelletier mentioned, it affects a, a bunch of other organizations both within the city and within the county. So I think it's a, it's a good overall fit. Councilor Schaefer, I'm always doing that.
And looking at her.
I, I end up with a real mixed point of view on this one. I share some of Council Tremble's reservations. I'm not convinced of the need for a facility that is this expensive. I think the starting operating costs are far greater than I would anticipate. And I think that this is like full funding for startup operations before any program revenue is established. I think the sustainability of the program in the future depends on additional fundraising. So it's not going to be continually finding and stuff of program revenue. And while we could speculate that other organizations will want to underwrite the center in the future, it depends on, it depends on that, just like we have criticized some other organizations for requiring ongoing grant funds in order to be sustainable. So I am a little iffy on the sustainability. I think the, a lot of these services, which this argues for really working more with the county. This is not a Bangor-focused application. It's a United Way, Heart of Maine-focused project for all not-for-profits throughout the entire United Way service area. And I'm troubled by using the ARPA funds to support something which is more regional than it is local. On the other hand, I think Councilor Pelletier was just right. This is a project that's inconsistent with what we hoped. We'd have invest in something that had a multi-year ripple effect. I think Council Fornier is right that this is certainly a very creative effort. But it, it has, I think it is overstated in terms of its cost. So I would rather see what we could do with the county and also see a much more scrupulous look at what it is really going to take for startup operations and when program revenue is anticipated. Because I think the advent of program revenue is too slow for the amount of operating cost investment that's being made. So I don't think the package hangs together as well, because it shouldn't, if we're going to fund it.
So I'm sensing we, we will do something. We don't know what the amount's going to be, but we want the county on board as we will be on board. Does that make sense? Councilor Yakabaga.
Yeah, I just had a comment about when we talk about an organization that serves regional area in, in Maine. I just want to remind all of us that when an organization works in a regional like area, it means it helps us in Bangor. This is the way I see it. It's we, we struggle because of all of the problems that are regional, but we feel the impact in Bangor, man. This is, this is why when I say, like, it would be great if the county chips in and supports this project. Absolutely. But at the same time, I feel I would love to go ahead with this, even partial funding. It's whatever we agree on. Regardless, it's regional, because I feel, we feel, we feel the impact of whatever is happening across Maine.
Councilor Dabit.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Thank you. I just want to, Councilor Yakabaga hit the nail on the head exactly as far as if we, sporting as, as Council Pelletier, in terms of supporting this helps not just those in Bangor, but all around our community, which continues to help us. If we constantly talk about how we want other neighborhoods and there are other towns, cities to help support the work that we're doing. And this speaks directly to that. Are we, I couldn't tell from what Council Chair Fornier said, are you, do folks want to push this before we do a motion and a vote tonight?
Say that one more time. You just.
I was just going to ask if, if, if there was consensus to do a vote this evening? Or if that was something where folks wanted more information before we did that, because I would support what Pelletier said, it's full funding contingent on the county contributing and the remaining in Bangor. So that we can at least check that box, keep moving, like we have with some other ones, or we're contingent on other options.
I guess my sense would be, and I'm, I think I'm hearing partial funding depending upon what the county is going to do. So I don't know what that but that final dollar figure is going to be from us. But I, I think if we can, if you want to take a vote, we certainly can, that we are in support of doing this. We just don't know what the dollar figure is.
So I think if you, no different than when we partnered with the county, the county came to us and said, hey, we have this ask. We're going to, we're willing to do this. Are you willing to do that? I guess I think for the county to be able to take definitive action and get out of the, as Councilor Schaefer referred to, if the ARPA chicken game, I think it would be helpful if we had a motion that.
With a dollar amount?
With a dollar amount that I could then turn over to the, to the Scott County.
Happy to accept the motion for maybe half?
Nothing like. I'll make a motion to support Heart of Maine United Way ARPA funding for four hundred thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Questions, comments?
I actually, I was reading something. This is four hundred, oh, and a contingent on the county. Right. Contingent on the county, okay, yeah.
Is that reflective of what you wanted to, Councilor Leonard?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Should I restate that, or is that?
It'll be fine as long as.
As long as you acknowledge, I think we're happy.
Okay. And the second was happy with that as well. All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Councilor Yakabaga.
Yes.
Council Tremble.
Yes.
Council Leonard.
Yes.
Council Schaefer.
Yes.
Council Sprague.
Yes.
Council Pelletier.
Yes.
Council Dabit.
Yes.
I'll make that unanimous.
Okay.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, homeless substance use disorder, Health Equity Alliance.
Yeah, so I heard from the executive director earlier today from Health Equity Alliance. They are continuing to work with some stakeholders and like, would ask that we table this discussion this evening.
Okay.
All right. Table it, come back.
The CDBG made a clear that too.
Pardon? Yes, I texted her.
Okay, I was going to say, I was surprised that the.
That's why they're not here.
Okay. Yep.
All right, last up, Wabanaki Public Health and Wellness.
Sure. So just as a reminder, the request was for one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in funding to support the development of two cultural centers. I can see I can't type and spell, which is really upsetting. Within Bangor, we have the Youth, Youth Center on Central Street and the Cultural Center on Kandaskay Avenue. There was a request, if there was any update on funding sources secured. They are still waiting decisions on proposals submitted, and they continue to write and submit proposals to other potential funding sources. The correct, the congressionally directed spending request has advanced through the committee process. Thus far, they have secured the fund secured three hundred thousand and two twenty. Are they dedicated to a location or purpose, or they can, can they be used to support other facility? The majority of the funds secured to date are flexible in nature, including the three hundred thousand from donors and the two hundred thousand from the Novo Foundation. The two ten thousand dollar grants from the Maine Community Foundation are specific for the Wabanaki Youth and Cultural Center. The Youth Center will include dedicated after-school spot, space for tribal youth, how many are living in Bangor. The folks know of at least twenty indigenous youth in the Bangor area who would utilize the space to begin with and understand there are many more native youth in the Bangor area whom they hope to serve as they expand their services. Asking if they had a sense of the number of youth that would be served by the expansion of after-school activities. They're hopeful to expand after-school activities to fifty native youth within the first year. And then, they hope to serve five hundred to a thousand youth per year with the expansion of after-school programs to non-native youth. And then. Um, and then they did, I did include the revised budget because the conversations from prior meetings seemed to have focused on some level of support for the youth center based on the additional information received. So I did include that in the packet as well.
Great. Thank you. Counselor Davit.
Thank you. Um, I would absolutely support fully funding this. Um, I think it's a crucial um, investment in our community, in our tribes. I would, I think it's incredibly important to point out that we are on unceded Wabanaki land. Um, and so this is just one tiny thing we can do in that area, um, as well as what it does for downtown Bangor, all of that. So um, I'll save my motion until other people speak, but I, I believe we should fully fund this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. I'm in support of funding this. Um, partial funding is what I would like to see. I would actually like to see us um, fund the youth center in full with the exception of the fiber optic star ceiling, which I think would put it in the range of about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Forgive my mental math if it's wrong. Debbie will correct me. Thank you.
It's six hundred and forty-eight thousand and Debbie was working on that math because it seemed to be the direction folks were leaning before, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Counselor Pelletier. I think uh if you look at the numbers, they're not huge numbers, but I think if you look at Bangor's, how we've been affected by the opioid crisis, we've been disproportionately affected, but so the Wabanaki in the state of Maine have disproportionately affected. And I don't think we wanted to add any more to our whole process, but I think if we had had these applications reviewed by the G E I committee, they might have had some input too and said, I think this would have weighed, weighed very uh, weighed very well, because you know, it's the Native American, the Wabanaki, they're in downtown Bangor. Um, I think it's a no-brainer and I think that appropriate way to fund it at that level, six, six forty-eight.
Counselor Schaefer.
I'd run it up to six fifty, but uh, just to make it even numbers, but I agree with the others. I'm in support of funding the, the youth center. Minus the star ceiling, it sounds cool, but that would, that's like a third of the budget and I don't think it's necessary for the other pieces.
Counselor Sprague.
Uh, I'm a contrarian on this and uh I would not support this at all. Uh, I don't believe the numbers are consistent with any documented need. Like the thought that they're going to support five hundred to a thousand youth in this program uh for after-school activities is just the pie in the sky made up idea that has no relevance and is simply not going to happen. Um, so I think we've got other programs. We've talked about, we've Boys and Girls Club, the Y teen programs, Big Brother, Big Sister. I think there's substantial number of uh projects in the community. Uh, this is a big investment and I don't think that there are going to be that many tribal youth who, yeah, well alone, other youths uh that are going to be using this facility and I think we're going to waste our money.
Other comments?
There's no motion. I would move.
Hold on. Uh, Counselor Leonard.
Uh, this is where, this is subject where I, I do agree with partial funding. Um, I actually um, would go further and agree with the Counselor Davit. I, I think the cultural healing that can be impacted to the Wabanaki, Wabanaki people would be completely invaluable and I think it would go as far to say um, create a wonderful collaboration between our two communities. I completely though understand um everyone's um inclination to do partial funding there.
I think I would love to support this partially. Yeah, for sure. I mean, for the youth center, it's um I look at it as recognizing um the Wabanaki community and we know that their youth are needed. So even if it's a small number of youth, that's fine. I mean, helping one person at a time, um, I totally support this call.
One more time?
Uh, my comments would be, I, I agree with Counselor
Okay.
Sprague on the number of youth that would be attending. I think that is all out there, but I also am in favor of uh partial funding. I'll accept that motion.
I would move that we uh support the Wabanaki Health Alliance and can I say six fifty?
Yeah.
See, six forty. I like round numbers. Six hundred and forty-eight thousand, partial funding for the youth center.
Right. Second. You have a motion. We have a second. Questions, comments? We'll do a roll call vote. Counselor Yakabaga.
Yes.
Counselor Trimble.
Yes.
Counselor Leonard.
Yes.
Counselor Schaefer.
Yes.
Counselor Sprague.
No.
Counselor Tr- uh, Pelletier.
Yes.
Counselor Davit.
Yes.
I will be a yes.
All right.
All right. Anything else for, okay, Counselor Trimble?
Well, I know like the heel asked to come back another time and then we, this is other than that, there's any I'm standing up is, I mean, do we, do we have an end date intended to wrap this process up? Do we have some? And then?
I would, I would, I would like to think that we're going to wrap this up in October. Um, the one counselor that hasn't come forward is we were waiting for, we had agreed to do the partnership with Penobscot County on the water. So I'll be bringing that council forward, order forward. I'd also like the opportunity to check in to see where they are in their process. Um, and you know, to me, we're going to wrap this up in October, um, because we're sitting here on the eighteen. Um, I think if I did work with the heel folks and let them know that if there's a revision and if they can get it back to us on Thursday, that we'll work to slide in on Monday um, so that we can be through all of the applications and then we'll have a final number. I'm also hoping um that Wellspring, I believe Wellspring has, um, because there are some additional funding at the state that perhaps they may want to do a little bit more. Wouldn't be more funding from us, but perhaps redirect some of their ask of funding to us based on what the state is going to fund. And I shared with Suzanne Farley that, you know, if there's an ask to change direction a little bit, that I'm sure the council would be willing to listen to that. Um, but then we could have the discussion, the counselor, any um Davit's point about there are two or three other items that are sitting out there that you all could discuss is whether or not you want to um consider funding those that typically come from what I'm going to call a municipal or a non-grant application standpoint, so that we can talk through that. It's not, I, we're sitting here right now, so we're at six forty-eight. You're at four hundred, so you know, you, you, you're at one point one million or so right now of funding available. Obviously, we'll want to finalize the conversation with the broadband in October as well. So my hope is, is this will all be wrapped up for you in this council year. You've done a lot of work this year and you ought to be able to see it come to fruition.
Any other questions, Counselor Pelletier?
Thank you. Just wanted to remind you all that I will be absent from Monday's uh council meetings and workshops.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, we are adjourned. Thank you.